Call the meeting to order. Ken, would you do the roll, please?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chair, thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Mr. Wager?
Here.
Excuse me, Commissioner Seeler? Not here. Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Stedner?
Stedner, here.
You stand there, I gotta learn the new names. And Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Ask if you're able, please join and stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I would like to welcome two new commissioners this evening. We have Jesse Wagner on my right, and we have Tim Stedner?
Stedner, yes, sir.
Stedner, aight, on my left. Welcome to the commission, we look forward to your contribution. I've asked each of them to have a few comments about themselves at the end of the meeting, so we'll hear more then, but welcome to the Planning Commission. On behalf of the Planning Commission and the City of Forest Lake, we appreciate your contribution. At least we hope we will.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
No pressure.
The Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or changes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I had a motion to approve, I have a second?
Second.
I have Kevin, the second. It's a non-debatable motion, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. Next up is, we're a little late on this, but it's election of officers. Every year, we are to elect a Chair and a Vice Chair for the commission. So with that being said, we will take a motion, is it a motion?
It is a motion.
It is a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I could add, we found two digging into the code, we're also supposed to, you all are supposed to pick a secretary, which would be kind of the third in the line of command if the Chair and the Vice Chair are unavailable for a meeting. It's back in the day, the secretary would have actually done minutes, but it's still in the code.
Alright, so we'll have three elections tonight for the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
Yes, sir.
I move that Mr. Gerard be elected Chair by acclamation.
Second?
What does that mean?
Um, just, you wouldn't even have to vote, right?
Correct.
Guess what?
We don't have to vote.
We don't even have to vote.
It'd be done.
Really?
Motion carries.
Yeah. All of you have to ask, right, you have to ask a question? All four?
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks. Before we go any farther, I want to let you know this, my last year as Chair, my 2026, January 26th, my term will end, and I will be leaving the Planning Commission at that time, retiring. And I would like to sit on the end, either end, so either one of you two guys can move at the end of the year, next time. So, but I will, I thank you for your confidence in me for another year, and start thinking about what you want to do next year.
You run a good meeting, sir.
Yeah, thank you. If the Chair is looking for a motion to elect a Vice Chair?
I like the idea of Representative Young, or Planning Commission member Young by acclamation.
I would second that motion, sir.
Hoist by my own batard.
Alright.
Stop it.
Do we have to vote? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain? The Chair is looking for a motion for the Secretary. If this is third in line, in case Susan and I are not here, I don't think you have any other real responsibilities on these?
No.
Okay. So the Chair is looking for a motion for the Secretary?
Which one of you?
I don't think it should be a new person, so it kind of narrows it down.
Say it fast.
Tom?
Uh, I would nominate Jeff as Secretary.
That's nothing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Just in case he's gotta take notes.
I told you to talk fast.
I did, I said, Tom.
No Tom here.
He fired you. Oh, I'm trying.
Alright, the Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. There's one item on there, the Planning Commission meeting minutes from February 28, 2024.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second it, sir.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Or the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
I probably got more than one abstain. Oh, Don's not here either. We have three abstains, Ken?
Two abstain and one absent.
No, we have three abstain, because Kevin wasn't here either.
Sure. Good point.
But we still got three votes.
Yep.
We okay?
We're okay.
Do we have to do this?
No.
It's fine.
You just have to sign and turn it in.
We just have to sign it?
Yes.
Okay.
Before you leave?
Before you leave, and as long as we're here, is there, what do we have here?
All. For Jesse?
As long as you're giving us souvenirs tonight, what all we got here?
It won't explode. For Jesse and Tim, when we did onboarding, we gave them a bunch of information on the jump drive or flash drive. And we now have given all of you the same information to refresh yourself on what a zoning ordinance is, and Planning Commission 101, and things like that.
Thank you very much.
So for your review, at your leisure.
Thank you very much. Item number seven, our first regular agenda item, is accessory building proposal for 23620 Forest Road North. This will be a consideration of a variance for Resolution 03-14-24-01, and considering of Resolution 03-14-24-02, site plan approval. We will have a public hearing this evening on the variance, or for item number one. Item number two does not require a planning here, a public hearing, but we will just meld it all together in case anyone would have comments. So the way this will work this evening, the staff will explain the application as they understand it. Commissioners will then ask any clarification questions that they have, to make sure we understand all of the information. We will then invite the applicant, if they want to add anything, or we may have some questions for the applicant to come up, and we'll do cover that then. After that, we will then have the public hearing, and it will host as many people who wish to speak at the end of the public hearing, and we close it. It'll come back for consideration for motions, and there will have to be two motions this evening for each of the items. So with that, I believe Ken, you're presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair, thank you. So as you introduced, the requests for this evening for this item are for the property at 23620 Forest Road, and I put that site map up on the screen, and the requests are specifically a variance and site plan approval. The requests have been made, so the applicant, Mr. Morley, can build a new 6,400 square foot detached accessory building on the property. The reason this needs a variance is because the city has zoned this property B3, which is our limited business industrial district. It is a legal non-conforming use on the property now with the home, the home and homestead, and this is dated about three years ago, aerial photo-wise. But there's a home and detached garage on there now, the new building is proposed for this area. But as we outlined in the report, at some point, this was zoned to the B3 district. And the reason for the variance is our commercial zoning districts only allow properties in the commercial zones to have one detached accessory building. He has one, and he wants to add the second. And again, because it's a commercial zoning on the property, the project's required to go through our site plan review, design review, as any commercial property does. So get to this site plan, this is the proposed site plan for the project, again, the existing home, existing detached garage, and the proposed building. And for any of you that may have gone out and looked at the site, you may have driven by on Forest Road and said, huh, it looks like there's already a building there. Well, there's one started. The frame is up, it's a pole, what I would call a pole frame building, so a pole barn. But that was started before the building permit was issued, and before all the zoning reviews were done. So there was a stop work order placed on the property, and then we, we, the staff worked with Mr. Morley to get the application materials together, or he worked on it, we worked with him to get the zoning, zoning applications necessary into the city, and that's why we are here tonight, so he can hopefully continue the project. So again, the proposed building would be here, 6,400 square feet, as a pole barn is. You'll look on page two of the report, which is page eight of the packet, I outline the code section that talks about one accessory structure in our B3 district, or all the commercial districts. But again, the primary use of the property is residential. Mr. Morley wants to use the new building for his private storage of his stuff, for lack of a better term, a lot of vehicles. He is not planning on using it for any kind of commercial activities. The entire property, if I go back here, is, all this property here, all the way down to the childcare center on the south, it's just over 20 acres. The yellow lines are the generalized boundaries of wetlands on the property. So there's a good two-thirds to three-fourths of the property in wetland area, and you can see also, it's quite heavily treed on the site. Again, the building site will be tucked in here. With that size of the property, it's staff's opinion that adding this second building is a reasonable use of the property. It will, looking at it in context, or with, yeah, I'll go back to this one. We don't foresee any detriment to the public, or to any of the neighbors, by again, having a new building here. There's large wetlands across the street, and some commercial properties across forest. So again, we're not seeing any potential public harm or issues by having the second building on the property. With the wetlands and the trees that are there, and will remain on the property, the north and west sides will be screened and would not be visible, and again, the nearest home is probably 1,000 feet to the west. So no visibility of the new building from that location. Going back to the site plan, it does meet all our city setback requirements, really no issues with that. One thing that did come up in our review, and I touched on that in the report, is they're showing the proposed access drive in these areas in rock, classified limestone is shown on this landscape plan. City code does require, again, for commercial properties, parking and driveways be of a bituminous or concrete surface, so there's no dust generated from the project, or from the new construction, so we're recommending that be added as a condition of approval. Second point I'll touch on is this landscaping plan was proposed with the application, again, heavily treed to the north and west, and our typical landscape code, we talk about number of trees per linear feet of the site, and it's one tree for every 30 feet, or some such number. That just, again, going back to this, with all the trees on the property, it just doesn't make any sense to try to do that math and try to plant a whole, this is a site, if it was a plain open field, sure, but there are lots of trees on the property. However, going back to this, it's staff's opinion that an effort should be made to help screen and improve the look, to help screen the building somewhat, and the parking area, driveways, from the public road, and there's a condition in the report about enhancing and beefing up the landscape plan. And right before the meeting, the applicant showed me that they have been working on a revised plan to address that, so I didn't study it, I said I would after the meeting, but it appears like it'll meet all the requirements I suggested in the report. The site is on septic well, so there's no public infrastructure connections. Again, one driveway going out with no big issues with the hat driveway location, there would be three exterior lights on the building that we just, no light, light pole or yard pole with lighting on it. So lighting shouldn't be an issue as long as the light fixtures are down shielded, or shielded so they shine down, and not light up the area. This is the design of the building, it has a horizontal wainscoting, about four feet tall on the bottom, on the visible sides, I would call the east and south sides, as you can see here, with garage doors on two ends of the building. This somewhat shows the colors, it's kind of a beige tan look, it is with a metal roof. This shows what I would call the backside, again, from the north and west, more of a plain Jane, but again, that's on the two sides, it can't be seen by anybody else, and really it's not a factor, in my opinion, as far as the look of the building. This is the visible sides, excuse me, and more important to have those looking better. We did share this request, these requests with our partners and other department heads or department agencies, really didn't get any comments except from our city building official, that the applicant will need to work with our city building official to make sure the building permit is up to speed, and if any refreshing needs to be done, that that occur before they start the construction again. The Watershed District has issued a permit for the project. We, as of this writing, and as of even today, I've not gotten any comments from any of the neighbors, pro or con, about the proposal. So we get into the findings of fact for, first of all, variance, and we have five criteria we're to look at as a city, and the commission especially knows are on pages five and six of the report, with staff's response in the italics on the report. First one we, it's from the code, is that because of particular surroundings, shape, or topographic conditions unique to this parcel of land, a practical difficulty to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. The practical difficulty here is the zoning. Physically, is the site got any particular challenges, like steep slopes or any of that thing? No, but it's an existing condition, again, with all the commercial zoning not created by the property owner, as I think Mr. Morley indicated in his letter with his submittal, there had been at one time a snow fence manufacturing facility on some buildings that were previously on the property, that he has since cleaned up and got him moving towards wanting this new building. The whole situation, again, is not of his making because of the zoning, the lay of the land. In my mind, that's a practical difficulty, that's, again, not created by him. Touched on it briefly, the use of the property by having a second accessory building seems like a reasonable use of the property, again, when it's 20 acres. Again, the unique circumstances, I touched on that with the zoning, current zoning. Would the granting of the variance be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other land improvements in the city? No. Again, I can't, I can't foresee how adding a second building could be harmful to anybody or any of the neighbors. And the proposed, last finding is the proposed variance, is that in keeping with the spirit intended this chapter of the zoning code, and will it, and will it not impair supply of light and air, increase congestion on streets, endanger the public safety, diminish or impair property values? No, it will not do any of those things, again, if it's approved. Getting into the site plan considerations, I touched on some of these things. It is important to point out that with the existing zoning and the existing comprehensive plan designation, land use designation of highway commercial, the continued use of the property as residential, even with a second building, is not consistent with our comprehensive plan. In my mind, is that a big issue? It's not, in my mind. The, if this property ever was to be used, or wanted to be used commercially, certainly this building would have that potential, even though there's no sewer and water on the site, but that's a possibility. And again, I, just for clarity, I want to make sure that that's called out. As far as the zoning ordinance, again, it can meet many of the elements of the zoning code, but it does need the variance, which I just touched on for the second building. The site will not alter, or the development will not alter the natural state of the property, again, a lot of the prep work has been done, and again, the wetlands or trees are preserved. We don't expect any of the neighboring properties to be adversely impacted by the proposed building. So to try to wrap it up, staff's opinion, again, that the additional second detached accessory building on this property will not detract from existing development in the area, it will be compatible with the present and planned uses, and will not have an inverse impact on the environment, surrounding properties, or public facilities. As the Chair outlined in his introductions, we have two resolutions for your consideration tonight. First is the resolution for approval of the variance, and that's, we're recommending that subject to four conditions. And then there's the second resolution recommending approval, or granting approval of the site and design plans, and that is subject to 12 conditions. Couple of conditions I want to touch on, again, the number four, the applicant or owner shall receive all approvals from permits from the city, the Watershed District, and any other agency that may still be needed. I think primarily that'll be through our building department. In number nine, we have some revised, or revised plans that we're calling out, including the landscape plan. We're also making, recommending a condition that they pave the driveways before the city issues a certificate of occupancy for the new building. And again, it's kind of redundant, but we also say that the applicant complete all planning, zoning, and permit reviews and approval before the city releases any additional permits for this project. That is a mouthful. With that, I will stop, I know the applicant and the applicant's representatives are here, and I'll take your questions.
Questions for staff? Kevin?
Ken, I have a couple. Do we not have a limit on the size of outbuildings that can be built on parcels?
When the, Mr. Chair members of the commission, when the parcels are greater than 20 acres, there really is not.
Greater than, or 20 acres?
Greater than 20 acres, and he's 20.2.
Okay, okay. The second question is, I see on the satellite view that I have here, there's been quite a bit of work done on this property?
Yes.
Grading, driveways, cut into the road, like you said, the buildings under construction. Were the permits ever pulled for any of this work?
As I understand it, from Mr. Morley, again, this shows some of the older buildings and stuff he had on the property, since he bought it in 2016 or 2017, he's been cleaning it up and removing some of this stuff.
You've been to the site?
Yes.
So does it look like this?
Yes, that's current, because to be clear, that's the start of the building?
Okay.
Before, before you got all the permits?
So there were no permits pulled?
Not, he, he started the building, then applied for the building permit after the fact because of a stop work order, and then, and then building department contacted zoning.
When they have to pull permits for grading and stuff as well? And cutting axes onto the city road or county road?
If it was grading as part of the building, no, because that all rolls into one.
Okay. And when you issued the work stoppage, were there any fines assessed?
No, but that's-
But there have been fines assessed?
There could have been, yes, and that's determined by our building official.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Susan?
What we usually try and do is bring a property more into compliance, not further away. We usually say, okay, if you want to have a large garage on the property, then not have two garages, but tear down the smaller garage, the old garage, and make your new one. And I guess I'm wondering why that wasn't the recommendation here, so that this property would be at least more in compliance with what our zoning rules are?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as I understand it from Mr. Morley, this garage was built in 2017 or 2018, so it says of new construction. Hypothetically, could maybe he've put a big addition on it, and had all one big building, possibly? But if this building was from the 1950s or 60s, and not in good shape, I'm sure he would have been open to that, but it was his request to have this service as more day-to-day garage, and then have the separate storage garage, and I think that's a fair question for the applicant.
Well, and it's my contention that it's not the property that's limiting him, he could, he could be in compliance and not need the variance for the second building by not having a second building, just making sure that whatever building he is building now is sufficient. So it is, it's not a problem with the property, it's, it's his choice.
Correct.
The principal use of the property is residential, correct?
Yes.
And that is essentially grandfathered in because of the way the zoning was changed?
Correct.
Would there be a reason to rezone the property, for instance, to go to ag, as a better way for them to use the property in the way they'd like?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we, we as a staff discussed that. The challenge is the comprehensive plan would also have to be changed? And we thought, as a staff, this would be, I don't know if I want to say an easier route, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, to get him to the point where he wanted to be with the second building. But yes, that would have been an option, or maybe the RR zoning, which is right here, might have worked. You could even argue the childcare center down here is RR zoning, probably should be B3. So there's problems with the zoning map, we don't disagree with that. I guess that's the best I can say on that.
And you have verified that the structure isn't going to be used for commercial purposes, like boat storage, or car storage in the winter, and things like that, because that my concern would be with, with no hydrants in the area, and the firefighting.
That's what he put in his statement, and that's what I'm going with for this request.
Thank you.
Tim?
That was my concern, with the size of the doors and the property, what is the, it's a storage, it's just simply a storage building, that is all it will be. For the size of the property, it looks like a large agricultural barn to me, or essentially a commercial type storage facility, it's considerable structure.
Tractor repair?
Yeah. Is that the plan?
It's, that's a fair question for the applicant. He does have one semi-truck, and I think at least one trailer, semi-trailer, he owns that would be in there.
I do have that question for him later.
Other questions?
Other questions? Hearing none, but the applicant liked to come forward and say a few words and tell us what the plan is, and I think there's a few questions for you. I ask that, for the record, you state your name and address at the podium and spend a couple of minutes telling us what you'd like, and then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Mike Morley, and yes, I am the property owner there. The plan for the building is, I have been a truck driver most of my life, and I do not run a trucking business, but I do drive a truck, and I own a couple of trucks. And so I have always had them at my home, wherever my home happened to be. And so one of the reasons is to able to keep my tractor inside out of the weather and whatnot. And the other part is, I have been a collector of Model A's, Model T's, older stuff, my dad and I pretty much my whole life, and some projects that I hope to get to close here into retirement. But basically, between storing those items, I have a fair amount of older stuff. It's just, it's kind of my hobby. And then as far as the size of the building, whether it be a motorhome or whatever, when you're gonna build a, a building, it only makes sense to me to make that as tall as it possibly can be. Motorhomes with air conditioners on the top or inside, a person can do a little bit more with the height of the building. So with the vehicles that I have and the trucks that I have, that is the reason why the building is, is as tall as I could, as I need to do what I want. And I don't run a business, but I do drive a truck for a living, and like I say, my truck stays with me, and my truck has always been at home, and so that's, that's what that's about.
Thank you. Sounds like we have a couple of questions for you. Tim?
Well, you answered part of that, that you have a large trucking, a couple of trucks that you're gonna park in there, so that's why you need it. Do you currently store the collection on site now, or is it something that will be moving to the?
No, I, I have them in another building in another town. Actually, it's Columbus. I own a business, I own a business, I own a house in Columbus that is currently for sale, and it has very similar buildings as to what I'm building, and that is, those cars and stuff have been in there for many years, and I'm just looking to move them here, so.
Was there a reason you didn't contact the city for the building permit prior to starting?
I made, I made a couple of big mistakes there. I had inadvertently thought that the permit was going to be issued in a short amount of time. This was a year, a year and a half ago, just coming into the winter, and I went ahead and I ordered my posts and my discs. And I was thinking that my permit would be ready before freeze-up, and when I checked on it, I had found out at the time that I thought I had, I was told I would need a, not a variance, but a conditional use permit. And thought that that's, and I made a bad decision just before freeze-up. I had rented equipment, I had a foreman around Thanksgiving weekend, and I had 50-degree weather, and I did what I shouldn't have done, and I put them up with no thinking my permit would be, would be ready. I did not have it, and I had no other materials ordered, I had nothing, I just thought. I made a mistake by doing that, and I, my only concern that was driving me, which was wrong, was that the poles are in, I can build in the winter. That was a mistake, and I wish I wouldn't have done it. And then I found out afterwards through Ken that it wasn't a conditional use permit that I needed. It indeed was a variance. And then I just kind of let the, the project sit and decided to get my ducks in a row and try to, try to redo this right. I regret doing that.
Sorry, I'm gonna ask you to speak a little closer to the microphone. This is broadcast to three people that'll watch it tonight, but we do have to have it for the record, so thank you. Susan?
You know, in the aerials and, and today, you've got your, your tractor and your, and your trailer parked parallel to the Forest Boulevard. It looks like that's your standard. On the plans that you're submitting, that area is all gonna be grassed. So are you, are you going to begin parking your tractor and trailer in the building regularly, or are you going to be pulling it into that drive area that will be paved? Or how are you going to handle that?
Depending on how frequently I will be moving, my trailer will either sit parallel to the road, or it will sit parallel to my, my home garage. If it's gonna sit for the weekend, I'll probably back it up to my garage and leave it there. If it's just an overnight, and I'm leaving early the next morning, I'll probably leave it, leave it hooked up in the U. I guess I didn't know that there would be much, I didn't know that there would be a condition on that. But you can detach them, you can do anything with them, and it's, it's not a big deal to do that. It's just, if you have your loaded trailer, you do have to watch where you put it.
Right. And we typically require parking like that on a paved surface. And I, I, yes, I did drive, and, and yes, I have noticed it. And so that's, that's why I think that if, if that's what you're planning on doing, you probably need to change the site plan to reflect a paved surface that's parallel to Forest Road for the, for the parking, instead of that being grass and turf, et cetera.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
And Mike, when you park, if you want to look at the screens, are you parallel here along the road then, generally?
If, if I'm hooked up, generally speaking, yes.
Is that the shoulder of the road then?
No.
Oh, no.
It's up in your yard?
Right. Yeah, there's, there's a fair amount of grass between.
Okay, yeah, this, this shows it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then a lot of times with a loaded trailer, if you are gonna drop it, you would either have that on a, a surface, or you would have a, a lot of times they'll actually pour extra deep concrete pads that's in, for the dollies to be on. So yeah, you, you, that does have to be on something.
So it would be out in this area, kind of, the front yard, if you will, where the landscaping is proposed?
Yep.
We go to, is this where it's going now?
I'm trying to see where you're at.
Where, where it's parked tonight, Ken, is just to the left of where that green blob landscaping is.
This one right here?
Yeah, just to the left of that. It's, it's well off the, the road.
Okay. I wasn't out there today, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, you could, excuse my reach, but if not right there, it could be right alongside here too.
Oh, okay, back.
It's kind of hard to tell exactly where that was, but most of the time, they're hooked up, and they're, they're not dollyed down, they're sitting on their axles, and many times, there's no trailer. It depends. Sometimes you bobtail home, and you might not have a trailer for weeks at a time, sometimes you'll be hooked up all the time, depends. And we, as drivers, we change around what we're doing sometimes, sometimes the trailers will change, and so.
Other questions, Susan?
No.
Commissioners, any questions, other questions for the applicant?
You mentioned foreman before. Do you have somebody building the building, or are you doing it?
No, it's, it's a foreman that has, a friend I know through work that has had previous, he's helped me out with my project as far as, he's built a lot of pole barns. It's, there's a couple of people that I know in the trades, and so, and I probably should have just said a name, but he, he has been, he's a foreman on a crew, and he was just doing this on the side, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any further questions? Thank you. We may have questions after we hold our hearing and whatnot, but thank you for all the information.
Very good, thank you.
This is a public hearing for the variance. Again, the variance is to allow a second structure on the, a second accessory structure on the property. So that is what the discussion is primarily about, but if you have a comment on the site plan, that would be fine also. So we'll open the public meeting at 7:41. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Mr. Chair, is there anyone online, or do you have any emails or correspondence to be read into the record?
Mr. Chair?
I am.
I do not, but thank you.
I'll ask again, is anyone, anyone wish to speak to this application? And Ken, still no one?
Correct.
With no one coming forward and no one online, we will close the public hearing at 7:42, bring it back to the commission for further discussion and for decisions. I'll give my opinion. The application is, I think, fairly solid for where it's sitting. It's an odd parcel that somewhere along the line, and I don't know exactly when it got zoned, highway, it was, I'm sure residential for many, many years. I'm not exactly sure when it became, so personally, I'm, I'm okay with this. Am I disappointed the applicant, applicant did not have a permit? Yes, it's water over the dam, he's explained he made a mistake. I'll take him at his word for that. That's my two cents.
I agree that it's a unique property, but we also try to bring things more into compliance rather than add-on variances. And, and in the past, we have asked folks to, if you want to have a bigger garage or a second garage or, or a, a storage facility, you need to bring, you need to come more into compliance with, with our zoning rules. And so I'm, I'm really reluctant to, to add on to the variances. I also think that this is gonna be, this, this whole area is a challenge. I agree with what Ken said about the daycare. But looking in, in the future, you know, the, the variances are the variances, and they'll, they'll run with the property. I, I think it could, just could get even stickier with sometime in the future, another owner or another use looking at it. I also want to make sure that either as part of the, the variance or as the site plan review, that, again, we follow our rules and that parking be on an all-weather paved That's, again, it's something that we are asking folks throughout the city to do, and fair is fair.
Want to add another condition?
Oh, I will.
May you take, if I may, Mr. Chair, take one at a time?
Oh, we will.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do have that they have to pave the, we do have a 9D is pay on the second resolution is to pave the driveway and parking areas adjacent to the new accessory bill, and we can add another sentence on there that would say, and for off-street parking of trucks and for, for all off-street parking.
Or any areas intended to be used for the parking of trucks or trailers?
We can do that, I think, pretty easily. Other discussion?
I just have a question here. Would it be possible to change the driveway coming in, so it would be a horseshoe to connect up to where his garage driveway would be? Then he could just pull through with the semi and park in between?
So I'm drawing, if you can see where my cursor is?
Yep.
Kind of drawing a line.
Yeah, right in there.
Yeah. I would think so, that might be a fair question for the applicant.
If, if we, you have a fair question. If the requirement is that he needs to have the truck off on the paved, how he gets there is, is up to him, and I, I think you have a simple solution there. Other discussion? Hearing none. The chair is looking for a motion for the variance, and that is to approve or deny the variance, and it would be resolution 03-13-24-01. As is or with changes?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I will make a motion that we approve the resolution 30, oh, 0, I'm sorry. Resolution 03-13-24-01 with the four conditions.
I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question, please?
Yes.
Ken, is it the conditions on the variances that condition, I'm looking for it, I'm apologizing?
9 is on the second resolution for the parking.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It's on the site plan.
All right, thank you.
This is just giving permission to build the second building. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstention? Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve or deny resolution number 03-13-24-02, which is the site plan and design review for a second detached accessory building at the property located at 23620 Forest Bull, Forest Road North.
Mr. Chair, since the variance has been granted by the commission, I'll move approval of the site plan with the condition that all areas that parking of vehicles and/or trailers occurs shall be paved.
Is that condition 13, or?
I'm trying to find it.
That's 9D.
9D, page 43.
Getting there.
Point of clarification, Ms. Young, if it's just, and maybe Ken can answer this if, if we're not sure, if it's just cars and, and things like that, do they have to be on a paved surface?
Yes.
Okay, just, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I added on 9D, so it reads now paving the driveway and parking areas adjacent to the new accessory building with the two minutes of concrete and then I added on, "And all areas intended for off-street vehicle parking."
To 9D, okay.
Is, is, what we're trying to emphasize here is parking on the grass or landscaping is not allowed.
Instead of intended for, may we say on which?
But it's, it's your motion, I'm just trying to help.
And, well, and?
I got you.
You, you know where I'm going with that.
Yep.
On which parking occurs.
So I have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I missed it, who made the motion in the second place? Thank you.
Susan was the second, Kevin was the first.
No, Susan made the motion.
Oh, Susan made the motion, somebody made the second.
I made the second.
Okay.
Who made the second?
I'm, I'm taking notes to help for the minutes, so thank you.
Where's that secretary when I need him?
Yeah, no kidding.
Correct me.
I have a building.
Okay, Mr. Morley, the way this works now, the Planning Commission on the variance is the final say, unless someone within the next week wants a different decision, they can appeal it to the city council. Otherwise, this motion will stand in one week's time as such, with nothing having to happen on your part. If someone wants to come forward and have a different decision, they have to reach out to the city within the next seven days. The site plan review, we are the final, so that part is finished as far as it won't need to go anywhere else. So, um, good luck on your project, we, we appreciate that you knew you had made a mistake and, um, hope it goes well.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up is item eight, we're having a discussion on, um, our municipal urban service connection requirements. And Ken, you're taking this for Abby?
I am.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Abby outlined in, in her memo, it's, was recently brought to our staff attention that the way the code is written right now, there are no clear requirements to compel new developments, again, primarily residential, to connect to the urban water and sewer services that are available when they are directly or readily available. So you could have hypothetically a, an area, maybe it's an infill area where there's sewer or water nearby or at the edge, but they want to just do large lot, single-family and they don't want to spend the time or the money to extend sewer and water and have smaller lots and connect into the city systems for those utilities. Th- that can be troublesome because now with more wells, there's more draw on the aquifer and more openings going into the aquifer that can allow groundwater pollution to e- more easily get into our groundwater system. And we all know septic systems, they don't last forever, they wear out, they need to be replaced. And if you have a one-acre lot or even a two-acre lot, sometimes finding a room for that second system or even down the road, a third system can be problematic. It's, we think as a staff, it would be best in the long term for the city to have clear ordinances that say if city services, primarily again sanitary sewer and water, are available or readily available and that, how that's defined would yet to become, we don't know yet, don't tempt me, Susan, that we should make it clear in an ordinance that a development has to hook up to those facilities. And again, the, right now, the language is vague and not real clear on that for those two utilities. So we wanted to bring this to you as a introduction discussion, see if you think that makes sense and then we'll, if it does, we'll dive into the process of, with our attorney of how to write an ordinance, how to make it clear what the expectations are of the city so they are clearer for developers and development going forward. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Comment, so when we get to a discussion, it's a little more casual, a little more free-flowing, I'll still give grant permission, but just dive in and just bombard staff with whatever your thoughts are.
Ken, do you have any examples that you could show us of pieces that?
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah.
I'll, I'll find it.
Because usually when these questions come up, some thing's in the works, right?
Well, yeah, there was.
Kevin, are, are you the straight man tonight?
I'm the straight man, yes, yes.
So this area I put up on the map, this is north of Highway 97.
Yep. Yeah.
We've had, and there's wetlands and you can see there's kind of a stream running through there.
Yep.
We've had a couple of different developers looking at it with this piece and all this and trying to figure out how they might best use the property. And a couple of the plans came in with smaller lots because sewer and water end right here. But when they get into that, then they have to improve the roads, put in curb and gutter and maybe even improve fondant all the way out because now we got more traffic.
Sure.
And so even though it's in the Musa and sewer and water are close, actually sewer's in fondant and the water ends right here, the developer's saying, well, you know, what if we just do large lots and don't hook to sewer and water? And we said, no, we don't really like that, but then we started digging into the code. We didn't really necessarily have the teeth to say, "That shall must hook up to sewer and water." So this is the most recent example that prompted this.
So if I was looking at that as an example, what type of wording would we use to say you have to connect up to city water and city sewer?
Well, that's, that's the devil in those details of when they are directly in or readily available. How that gets defined is it, if they're within 200 feet or 500 feet or I, I, we, we don't know that yet. We're just.
Yeah, could you, because there are houses, single-family houses where, you know, we know the water's in the street, but they've never hooked up, they still run off a well.
Right, right.
And we don't even have a rule that says if you sell at that point and it transfers ownership, you have to hook up.
Right. And, and I, where I've worked elsewhere, we've had rules if the sanitary sewer's available, you can keep your septic for up to two years, but then you need to hook up to the sanitary. And I don't think our rules in our code even require that. Now, I don't know if we would or not, again, we're at the very starting point to gauge the support or lack of support for going down this road or writing some ordinance language to clarify this.
So, so we have sewer down, because we're on the lake there, so we have sewer everywhere, it's really the water, right?
In this case, yes, but if they didn't want to do sewer, there's nothing in the ordinance saying, clearly saying that they have to hook up to the sewer.
They would just have to have minimal lot sizes.
Right, right.
What, what is that lot size?
Uh, 25,000 square feet, I believe, which isn't, isn't very big, it's if you have no water. There's, that's, that's the sewer system there, the green lines. And then the water, the water ends right, right there. Okay.
Thank you.
There's not water that runs along Scandia Trail there, that, that blue line doesn't have it?
It, yeah, that's a big beam, but the easier extension's right here because this would be at the corner of the development versus crossing under Highway 97. In this case.
Quite frankly, we don't have the staff to do a good job of wellhead protection. We're not doing it now and we know that there are significant issues with additional wells in the area. Additionally, especially on the sewer side, you know, I, I was, when I first moved here, I was very pleasantly shocked and amazed that as much of the area around the three, four, uh, three, around the three lakes was sewed. We do not have good soils here for, for septic systems, we just don't. And quite frankly, our comp plan says that we are going to be highly protective of our natural resources, including the lake. And sewer, when, whenever it is in, within, we need to talk about what a reasonable distance is, but I would say a half mile at least is what is going to be protective of, of our resources here. And quite frankly, that's, they call it speculative development for a reason. It is not the city's job to guarantee any developer, uh, you know, a?
Financial success?
Yes, thank you, that's, that's a much kinder way of saying it. And it is the city's responsibility to protect our residents and to protect our resources.
Other comments? I personally have no problem with moving forward, I would have, to me, I thought we had it. I, I would, it's just, especially if we've moved to these smaller lots, it's just an expectation. So, and if you had my water, you would be thrilled if city water came through. But as I've been informed, North Shore won't see it while I'm still walking the earth.
Or me.
So that's my two cents, so I, I'm all for it. Do you want a straw vote on this or?
Yeah, is, the straw vote comments, any other comments? So I'm, I've heard two very supportive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for, I'm for language.
I am too, I'm for it.
Okay.
I would agree.
There's no other cities that are running into this where we could kind of look at what they have?
Well, I'm sure there is and I, I'm sure when, assuming we get going on an ordinance, we would be.
Plucking some stuff?
Yes, we're, we're gonna not, we're gonna try to not reinvent the wheel and, but yes, that's, we will be searching out other examples to put it together. But first, again, we wanted to gauge the, the, A, did it make sense to the commission and B, what the support would be to go down this road? I guess I'm hearing yes and yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
And the law firm that we use, was it Laverne, Levi's? I forget the name.
I don't know who it is anymore.
Amanda.
They do a lot of municipalities, so they can walk across the hall and get tons of information.
Or check the computer files.
Well, and the league has got standard language too, so.
Okay, good, that's all, that's all I need unless there's other comments.
And seriously, we get the league language for free, we're, we're members.
That's, that's all I had on this unless there's other comments.
All right, we'll move to the staff updates and we'll start with our senior member. I see we have Councilperson Roberts here.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah. So I, I really don't have anything other than just welcoming Jesse and Tim and, and it's good to see pretty much a full slate here. And so if you have any other questions, to me, that's, that's all I have for an update.
Questions for Councilperson Roberts?
Great.
Our lucky night?
Yeah.
There's Candace.
No, I wonder if, if you want to touch on the city administrator process?
I, I certainly can, so, um, as I spoke last time we were here, we made a decision to, I don't know if the right term is fast-track, but, you know, Christina has done a really nice job, she's coming in and, and helping us navigate some tough situations and she, she's just an excellent candidate. And so we thought, she, well, she's a finalist for Hudson and we'll find out if she gets that position on, on next Tuesday. But in the end, in between that, there was just some negotiations for compensation that the council just didn't feel right about and so on Monday, we decided to change again where we're gonna bring in the full, well, I guess the whole process of having them, the consultant come in and bring up other consult, or other candidates. And so that was a bit of a change, but I think long-term, I'm not saying that the current interim, it would, I mean, she's been really good and she probably might likely fill that seat long-term, but we just felt more comfortable with slowing that down a little bit and going back to the process of bringing in other candidates. And so, you know, I think a lot of, a number of you, especially the chair, will be a part of that interview process and so any feedback as that goes forward, we'll be gratefully, grateful to have for us, so.
Which firm are you with, are you working with on the search?
DDA, so don't ask me what DDA stands for, but it's, uh, something, something associates, so.
And one of the things that has been, um, that residents have appreciated in the past is when the council has gotten down to two or three top applicants having a, a meet and greet.
Both are falling.
Yeah, so that, um, not so much a, a, a grill from the crowd, but an opportunity for folks to get to know the candidates and give, and informally some questions and philosophies, et cetera.
Yeah, so until Monday night, that was planned for Christina's tomorrow. But now that that, that's been canceled, so then that definitely will happen. And it's, we've all been through, like, not all of us, but you've been through a number of administrative interviews and so that is, that's invaluable to have that feedback, for sure.
And, and council member, one, one more thing. One of the frustrations in this community has been that staff and the administrator, administrator especially, has not been visible in the community. You know, there are, there are things that this community does that people expect an administrator to be there, to make an appearance at Spring Fling, to be, you know, an appearance at Veterans Day memorial celebrations.
Applaud, sure.
To be very visible regularly in Arts of the Park. And, and I think that setting that expectation and having it a part of your recruitment and expectations would be something that this community especially would find valuable.
I would totally agree, especially moving from the, the former administrator that we had, which that did not happen at all. And so in early conversations with Christina, she was more than willing to do that. She used to live in Forest Lake, she lives in White Bear Township. Her intent is, if she's the long-term position, to, to do that. In this interim, she just didn't feel comfortable doing that, but she will if she is the long-term person. But great, great points, yes.
Any other comments for Councilperson Roberts?
No, sorry.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah.
Ken, do you have anything for us?
I think I'll clarify for Jesse and Tim, I am not related to Blake, just coincidentally.
I'm not one, I'd like to know which you, you consider that a bummer.
I do. Couple of updates, uh, just the Mr. Car Wash project, you've heard about it, read about it on Broadway. They're supposed to start construction on March 26th. And that will start with utility work on 12th Street because the utilities are gonna come in from 12th Street, go along the south side of the Chipotle Building towards the site where the Five Below Building is gonna go and then turn and go into the Mr. Car Wash site. So that'll take two to three weeks and then they'll be able to start the building, building on the car wash site itself. The Five Below project, that's coming back through for final PED approval. We'll be reviewing that at the next meeting. There's really no change, they've made, they've made all the changes that we were, were requiring as part of the preliminary PED with all landscaping and such and I don't expect any big controversy with that. The dental clinic, he's getting ready to start clearing the site any day now, so he wants to keep. wants to keep moving that forward. I think that's, and we hear the developer Shadow Creek's trying to work on his final plans to get stuff going for that, especially the townhouse site. And Hidden Creek, there's a lot of homes going up down there, and we keep hearing that they want to get approval for their second phase, which would create 50 or 60 more lots. So far, they've had good interest, so. There'll be more activity, for sure.
Meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. And for those new on the commission with the Mr. Car Wash with the utilities, there's some public infrastructure that runs diagonally right through that lot, and that's been the main stumbling block in getting that developed is you can't build over those utilities, so they, Mr. Car Wash has to move them all on his nickel.
Yep.
To make that clear, it's on his nickel before he can, they can commence, and, and they knew that when they came for, for pebbles, so. And that's all I, no, no, that's all I wanted to update on for that, so go ahead, Susan.
Ken, there was a manufacturing facility that was gonna be going in on the south side of 97, but I haven't seen anything happening there.
Radio silence. We've not heard anything here either.
Okay. How long are those, are the approvals that the city has given that property, how long are they in force?
I'll have to look.
For some reason, I thought it was a year, but I.
I'll, I'll have to look. I just don't know at the top of my head.
Is that by interstate companies?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Norhart's project.
Yeah, it was going to be a big manufacturing warehouse, assembly building for Norhart.
He's gonna build.
Apartment walls.
Apartment walls, and then he had a second, he wanted to do a tip-up walls.
Yep.
I don't know the form of the term.
Prefab wall panels. Well, and remember, one of my first projects I worked on shortly after I started here was, they've got the site on 11th, where they got the smaller facility, and they came in with plans to redo the parking lot and make the building and make the site all nice, and that was a year ago, and they haven't done that project yet either.
Okay.
And the only thing I can speculate is that business isn't as good as it was, or their business model has changed, or I, that it's just purely speculative.
Okay.
Any question, other questions, Ken? Okay. Kevin?
I'm good.
Tim?
I'm good.
Tim?
Oh. Fine. Well, I appreciate being here. I'm excited to be part of the commission. It was something that I put a lot of thought in before applying. I've been part of this community for a long time. I'm married. For you that haven't met me, we've been here since 2009. We have two children. Mitchell's a senior this year, Sophia's 13. I have a background in construction, so I thought if I wanted to get active with my city, this might be a great opportunity to fill a commission or a seat and give back a little to the community that's been really good to me and my family. So I'm really gra- grateful to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you guys and learning from you, too. That's important. I won't know everything, and I'll ease into it.
And we won't allow Q and A, so. Susan, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Larson?
No, sir. Thank you.
Jesse?
I'm Jesse Wagner. I decided to try and out for the planning commission, because I've lived in Forest Lake all my life, and wanted to give back to the community and see how it develops, and I've been happy with how it's been changing ever since I've lived here, and thought this would be a good opportunity to get out and learn a little bit more about the community.
Hi, welcome. Welcome both you gentlemen. I have no, no other updates, so with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Put your book.
I second.
I got a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion as normally is unanimous. Thank you all for your service this evening. See you in a couple of weeks.